Good morning, everyone. We call the meeting to order, Chester Council. Meeting, March 13th, 2024. As per normal, we're gonna open the meeting with a prayer. And as I said earlier in the year, for every occasion that we get, we're gonna bring in a, you know, someone to do a prayer, whether it be one of our chaplains or one of our local clergy. Today, we have Father Ianelli from St. Catherine Drexel. Did I get that right? Okay. Who's gonna offer us the prayer this morning? Welcome. Please rise.
Thank you, Mayor and members of City Council, for the kind invitation to open with prayer. And we ask God's blessing upon everyone gathered here for this morning's meeting. Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all nations. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you, authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit of counsel and fortitude, the mayor, that his administration may be conducted in righteousness and be helpful to your people over whom he presides. May he encourage your respect for virtue and religion, may carry out the laws with justice and mercy, and may he seek peace on our streets. Let the light of your divine wisdom direct the deliberations of City Council and shine forth in all the proceedings that laws frame for our rule and government. May they seek to preserve peace, promote happiness, and continue to bring us the blessings of liberty and equality. We pray for judges, elected civil officials, first responders, and all others who are entrusted to guard our political welfare. May they be enabled by your powerful protection to discharge their duties with honesty and ability. We likewise commend to your unbounded mercy all the citizens of the city of Chester, that we be blessed in the knowledge and sanctified in the observance of your holy law. May we be preserved in union and that peace which the world cannot give, after enjoying the blessings of this life, be admitted to those which are eternal. We pray to you, who are Lord and God, forever and ever. Amen.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Thank you.
Counselors Gibson.
Present.
Green.
Present.
West.
Present.
Davis.
Present.
Mayor Roots.
Present. On our agenda, we have a few announcements. City Council met an executive session on Wednesday, March 6th. What was that executive session? What was the topic there?
The executive session was, it's not legal. Draw a blank.
Okay.
Well, we didn't, we had an executive session to discuss police matters. We did have that yesterday.
All right, we'll get back to you on the topic. That's important to let you guys know what we talked about in executive session. So we'll do better. Chester City Second Annual Women's Health Conference, March 23rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This flyer is out on the table. Is that correct? Make sure you get this. Was last year the first one we had?
No. The first one was held at Whiting University. It became so large, we had to move it to St. Louis.
No, I'm saying was last year the first one?
Yeah, that was the first one.
Yeah. And, okay, this is the second annual. I was there last year. It was amazing. I'll be there this year. I encourage you, whether you're a man or a lady. This conference is really phenomenal. Keynote speaker, Lisa Thomas-Lawrie. And the cost is free, so it was no excuse. Vaccine Clinic, March 21st, 2024, at the Edgemont Senior Apartments, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And again, there's a flyer, right there at the front door. Would you like to say a little bit about the?
It was fine.
Okay, so everything that everyone needs to know is right here.
We want to keep them protected, okay?
And the vaccines are the COVID, RSV, flu, and booster shots. And we always have shingles.
Yeah, shingles, pneumonia.
Pneumonia. Okay. It's time for public comments on action items only. The action items are the items that are on the today's agenda. Do we have anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on to our... Oh, we do have one? I'm sorry. Come on up. Thanks. State your name and address.
My name's Melvin Campbell, 226 Mead Street, beautiful city of Chester. I might be off on this, but my complaint is the streets in the city. Your number one thing, R-18, are they the ones trying to be doing the streets? We have a ton of streets that need to be repaired. Go ahead.
Yeah, continue.
All right, my complaint is few streets. 23rd Street, East 23rd Street.
All the way down from Edgemont down to Providence.
You got a dent, sorry. You got a dent in that street there. Plenty of potholes, some of them are eight inches deep. They've been there for a while, and they've been getting worse. Somebody's gonna pay for a car sooner or later. Houston Street, between Madison and all the way through to Parkside. Potholes all over the place. 22nd Street. Major potholes in there, need to be repaired. There's, well, 22nd Street's a state road, so I guess we're gonna have to wait the state to do that, I guess, huh? And yeah, Madison between 14th and 17th Street and 20th and 21st Street. They're atrocious roads. Visitors come in here, they complain about it. At least I know the visitors that come to my house. And some of them know that when they left here five years ago, those holes were there. They haven't been really repaired. They've been patched over and never done. So they really need to be pulled up, grinded down, and redone. All right? That's about it. I got on that right there. Do we think we can get something done on those?
Yes, we think we can get something done on those. So one of the things that we're gonna get with a, with a full engineering firm is the ability to do a full city road maintenance program, to get that started. And you're absolutely correct. We have been patching roads. Our guys go out with cold patch just about every day. It's not just the main roads that you've talked about, but it's back alleys, it's, you know.
I didn't even get over that.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, you're speaking to the choir here. There is a big issue with our roads and keeping them upkept. It's unfortunate that the city doesn't have a lot of the equipment to do our own work. And the expense for, you know, doing roadwork is...
With about state money coming in here.
Well, you know, it has to be earmarked to roads. So our objective is to build up our own force, to put our own equipment, so we can mill a road, pave a road.
State money should be coming here for us to repair these streets. That's my biggest...
I understand your point. It's not like we're ignoring the roads. But thank you for bringing it to your, it does look like it.
It does look like it.
I'm not gonna argue that.
All right, thank you.
But there is a concerted effort. Do you have something on agenda item only? You have, if you are, you have to step up to the microphone, state your name and address. And you have three minutes.
My name is Diane Noel, and I live at 713 East 25th Street.
Speak into the microphone, please.
For the past three years, we've been complaining about the corner of 25th and Providence, where all the logs are. We have an ordinance, ordinance in our neighborhood that there should be no businesses. And these logs have been there for three years. I've been complaining, our neighborhood has been complaining, and nothing's being done. We've called the cops. We've done this for the past three years. Those logs are still there, and it's a sight. We pay the highest taxes in the city, and we have to face that when we come home. Now, I've dressed this with you, I've dressed this with previous council, and nothing's being done.
Okay, thank you.
So how is this gonna be addressed? It's been three years. I've talked to you too.
That's your public comment. Thank you. The fact that nothing's being done isn't true, but I will admit that the logs haven't moved. So if that's what you're saying, that's true. We are working.
Three years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So we can talk about that when we get to the regular comment section of the meeting. But we are well aware of the problem. We have been going after the land owner, and it is a matter that's in court. So to say that nothing's going on is not true. There's a lot going on, but the logs haven't been moved. And here's our police commissioner.
I'm helping this gentleman.
Oh, I thought you were gonna make a comment.
No, I can make a comment on it. I'm actually born and raised on that street, 739. My parents grew up in, I lived at 741. In reference to the property, the gentleman who has it, we've been back and forth. Solicitor's given me a hand. Prior engineer, Mike Alonte, was on it. Taken him to court, going back and forth. Believe me, I oversee it all the time. And it's been there for a while, and it was never there. Directly across the street from Eric's Auto Repair. I do know there was something where his son died, and then the father, I believe, was arrested down in Merlin. Don't quote me on that. I was working with the District Attorney's Office. But it's not an overnight process. I do agree with you, three years is a long time. But we are looking at every angle to address it. Trust me on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other public comments on public, on action items? I'm sorry. All right, let's go with the resolutions.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the contract with Colliers Engineering and Design, Inc., 181 Washington Street, Conshohocken, PA, 19428, Suite 430, in the amount of $395, to assist with developing safe streets and roads projects and engineering services to meet our capital plan needs, ARPA project completion for all action plans to prioritize safety enhancements and justify essential investments. Professional services through the proposal process, two quotes provided, five requested, three-year contract. Further, that it does authorize the proper city official to execute said agreement for and on behalf of the City of Chester. Further, said agreement is continued upon final approval of the city solicitor.
Second.
Any questions, comments? I just wanna make one comment. It's $395,000.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
$395,000. That would have been a bargain.
Oof, yes.
Roll.
Counselor Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Crystal Brooks, 924 Booth Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Number two, Franklin Roberts, Sr., 2000 Madison Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Number three, Jeffrey Jackson, 733 Irvington Place, Chester, PA, 19013. Number four, Wayne Thomas, 106 West 22nd Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Number five, Lamara Milton, 312 West Mallory Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Number six, Arthur Rothwell, III, 1319 West Third Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Number seven, James Hudson, 2534 Lindsay Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Number eight, Clara Hitchcock, 28 East 23rd Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Number nine, Patricia Thorpe, 200 West Fifth Street, Chester, PA, 19013. And number 10, Sally Michalkowicz, 3354 Carter Lane, Chester, PA, 19013. And whereas, after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined the aforementioned individuals have met all the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the 900 block of Booth Street, in the 2000 block of Madison Street, in the 700 block of Irvington Place, in the 100 block of West 22nd Street, in the 300 block of West Mallory Street, in the 1300 block of West Third Street, in the 2500 block of Lindsay Street, in the unit block of East 23rd Street, in the 200 block of West Fifth Street, and in the 3300 block of Carter Lane in the City of Chester.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Roll.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that Resolution 12-2024, which was passed by Chester City Council on February 14th, 2024, is amended to read as follows. That it does hereby accept the quote received through Keystone Purchasing Network, KPN, from Dale Marketing LP through Tech Guides for IT improvements, hardware, software, and network upgrade for the City of Chester, Project 53 and 22, not to exceed $1,024,500, which is to be paid from American Rescue Plan Funds, ARPA. Further, the city has complied with all KPN bidding requirements. Further, the contract is continued upon final review and approval of the city solicitor.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas, the City of Chester made a request for a proposal for the temporary staffing services, ARPA Project Number 59 through PIN bid, with proposals due October 2023. And whereas, the city has complied with all PIN bid use requirements. And whereas, the sealed proposals have been tabulated with no discrepancies found. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve human resources to manage a temporary staffing company to provide workforce opportunity for those seeking to return to work and obtain stable employment. Processed through the procurement process as a result, awarded to Careers USA in the amount of $120,000 to be paid from American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, under Project Number 59. Further, said contract is continued upon the final review and approval of the city solicitor.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas, the City of Chester is desirous of implementing a policy for the use of community engagement funds for elected officials. And whereas, said policy outlines the appropriate use, management, and oversight of community engagement funds to ensure these funds are used to foster community engagement, support local initiatives, and enhance the constituents' welfare. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby adopt the community engagement funds for elected officials, policy for all elected officials of the City of Chester employees. Further, this policy will take effect immediately upon the passage of this resolution. Even further, said policy may be changed or updated from time to time as Chester City Council deems necessary.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
That concludes the resolutions. An ordinance. Bill Number One on its first reading. An ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, enacting new Article 108 entitled Chester Community Benefits, amending the codified ordinances of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, in 1978 as supplemented and amended to require a community benefits agreement for search and development projects that receive city support or financial assistance, including abatement of municipal taxes, all under certain terms and conditions, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I make a motion that we pass Bill Number One on its first reading.
All right, any questions on this one? Roll, please.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Let's hold up on this one. Chief, what, what's your note here?
Bill Two.
Bill Two. To, does it refer to committee with public comment prior to?
This is where we're gonna refer to the Finance Committee.
Okay.
This is Bill Two, which is gonna be the fee ordinance. So it's gonna be referred to Finance Committee.
So that's our role up here today, is to refer it to the Finance Committee?
Yeah, that's where we're gonna refer to Finance Committee, the chair of it.
Via a vote or just a comment?
Just a comment.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so bear with us. We're, we're adopting a committee structures amongst our council people. And this is the first meeting that we've had where we're rolling it in. So this new ordinance will not be read. It will be referred to a committee. And the ordinance that we're speaking of is a fee ordinance. It's an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, enacting of Chester City Fee Schedule, amending the codified ordinances of the City of Chester, 1978, as supplemented and amended to establish fee schedule rates, setting nominal fees based upon program costs using the market-based approach so that payments are consistent with efficiency, economy, and quality of care, and sufficient enough so that the services are available to the general population in the geographic area, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith. So this will be referred to Finance, Budget and Finance Committee, chaired by Councilman Davis, and it will be followed by public comment. So that's what just happened. This ordinances has been put in your hands, and then you're gonna make sure we have public hearings. So public comment with regard to this.
I would like to make a comment.
Sure.
So the one comment that I have in regards to the committee structure that we're now adopting as a council is the purpose of to inform the city and actually have people from the community actually come and give their input on what we're trying to do in regards to the different changes we have going on that's going to affect the residents directly. So that's something that's really important moving forward, that we're going to be putting out more information for residents so that they know what's going on, and they actually can bring their comment to the table and actually be heard. And the comments are actually going to be, I believe, Justin, will the comments be posted on Facebook when we have our committee meetings? Is that something that we?
The minutes?
The minutes, okay. So that's important for the residents to know that they can actually come to the committees and actually voice their concerns or any questions that they have going forward.
And Chief, if you can, this will be new for the City of Chester and also new for City Council. We would operate more like a legislative body. And Chief, if you can explain to them the new process of how this will work so that the public will understand. Let's move to the analysis we're talking about.
So as the council explained, this is a new process. So everyone have to bear with us as we do this. One of the things, as the mayor has alluded to, when you do Robert Rules of Order and City Council, many of people had concerns that they didn't have a chance to voice their opinion. And normally in a council meeting, that's normally what should not happen. So what the committee is gonna do is, as you will see in your agenda, there's several different committees. There's a Budget and Finance Committee, there's a Community and Economic Development Committee, Human Resource and Administration Committee, Park and Rec Committee, and Public Safety Committee. All of these committees are gonna be chaired by the council members. This gives them an opportunity, and also you as the public, to voice your opinion at the actual committee meeting. This is where you can have true dialogue, conversation back and forth. And it, again, it helps with the council meeting to be more efficient and more effective. But at the actual committee meeting, it gives you your opportunity to speak. And if you need to speak a couple of times, it gives you that opportunity as well to speak more than just for three minutes. So that's your time to really dialogue with council, with the chairs, and with the other council members. Now, the way the structure will work is they'll have that conversation with you during that time. If there's things that they're not satisfied with, like, for instance, like this Bill Number Two, that will be discussed at the Finance Committee. So if there's things that council members that are on this committee are concerned about, or they have questions about, or even you have questions about, they can say, they can table that bill at that point in time. And they table it, then they give it back to us as the administration to go back and go back to the drawing board and answer the questions that you all may have or answer the questions that the council members may have. If everything is comfortable with the council members at that point in time and is comfortable with you as constituents and members, then at that point in time, they can vote to move it forward favorably or move it forward to council as a whole. Then you'll get another shot at it. So in essence, you as a community, you will get two to three opportunities to really have conversation about a resolution or about a bill. And it also gives council more time to really digest some of the stuff that they're getting. Oftentimes, they may have a week or two to really read it and digest it. But now this gives them multiple times to really understand it and digest it and have any questions that they want to send back. So again, as we go through this process, if you do have questions or concerns as a community, you can definitely come and talk to the staff, talk to us about it. Again, you have to be patient with council as they're going through this new process as well. But as we talk to each other, council and the mayor, solicitor, myself, we wanted to give you all an opportunity, have more time to really look at the ordinances, look at the bills. And then, again, if you have questions, give you time to really discuss and ask those questions at that time. All right? Did I cover it?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Chief Leitner, what I wanted to ask you is that as the committee's attempt to resolve, resolve whatever the issues are that the community is bringing forward, will council members have the ability to go to the department to do their research, or we still have to come through you?
The research, it depends on what the issue is. But you're, the city council now, they would be working through their city clerk to do research. So if there are certain things that you want to dig more into, you have questions about what other municipalities are doing, that's gonna be done through the city clerk in conjunction with myself and in conjunction with legal.
So we see the city clerk.
Correct.
And yourself.
The city clerk.
Point people.
Your city clerk is gonna be your point person. You're gonna have two of them. We can discuss that. I think we kind of discussed it yesterday, but we can talk more about that. But as we go through that, your city... But as we go through that, your city clerk is going to be your point person. The other reason we're doing that too for you as constituents is we want to start really annotating, analyzing, and logging the complaints that come in. That's what the city clerk is going to do. So when your complaints and stuff come in, our intentions, and again, you're going to have to bear with us, is when you come up and you voice your concerns, the city clerk will log those complaints. And we will be getting back to you. That's why we asked for your phone number. We're going to be asking for your email. So we can respond back to you via email, via phone call, to let you know the status of what you complained about. I don't like to use the word complaint. Your concerns. So whatever your concerns were that you want us to address, we will actually be logging that in now. And that will be sent back to you so you will know exactly what's happening and where we are with the process. Many of you have concerns and sometimes, as they expressed here, you, sometimes these things can't be resolved overnight. As the commissioner said, some of these things, we have to go to court. When you're talking about residential issues, you're talking about blight proper properties, you're talking about the logs on the streets or on that parcel. Many of these things can't be resolved overnight. We do have to serve proper notice. We have to notify the courts. We have to go through an entire legal process. So again, we want to keep you informed. So that's another reason why we're going to be asking for your emails so that we can correspond through council, through the city clerk, in order to get back to you.
Well, let me have you explain just a little clearer. You know, the committee is made up of one person on council who's going to lead each committee. And the other two members are council members. We will encourage others to join these committees as you see fit, as you're interested. But the committee, the core of the committee is a council person as lead and two other council persons. So when we did mention community involvement and mentioning voting on these, you know, issues that will be coming up, is everyone a voting member or just the council people?
Just the council people. Because you're taking legislative action. So that's why the council members are on this. Because they're still taking an action from a legal standpoint to vote on a bill or a resolution. And they're voting to move it forward. But we're encouraging you as participants to be at the committee meetings. But they shouldn't be on the committee because you're taking legislative action.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear.
Another question. Would it be more effective to have not just council members on the committee, but a director from whatever department that would handle like Public Works or Public Safety, something like that? Would it, would it be more effective to have the director involved in that committee meeting?
The director will be at the committee meeting because the director's the one that's going to be presenting the information to the committee. So whatever that department, so we'll say Public Works, Public Safety, there's a Public Safety Committee. So Commissioner, both Commissioner Shirley and Commissioner Gretzky are required to be at the meeting. Because if there's something that's dealing with Public Safety, they're the ones that are going to be responding to the Public Safety Committee. So any of these committees, whatever department directors have charge of that, will be required to be at the meeting because they're presenting to council and the committee of what the action is.
And let, final remarks. And this is, um, this is the first time it's happened in the city. But in order for us to move the city forward, we really have to begin to operate like a third-class city. And this is what other third-class cities, this is the way they operate. This is the way other cities, not just in Pennsylvania, but around the country operate. They operate through a committee structure. And, you know, they serve like as a legislative body. And so as we transition and as we move the city forward, there will be a lot of cha- changes. And we just ask the community to bear with us as not only is this new for you, but it's new for the city council as well.
And I think, go ahead.
And just fin- I'm sorry. And just final comment. Final comment moving forward with Councilman Green said in support of that. This structure is also similar to those who follow the State House. So you, you go to, you know, residents can go and talk to Representative Carol Kozine and different state representatives. This is how they do things in the State House. When bills have issues or have different things that they might need to be tabled on, they actually go to a committee. And the committee at the State House has the opportunity to bring it to the public. The public can make comments on it. And it gives opportunity, brings more transparency into the ways we govern ourselves and govern our land. So this is a very positive change and comments with Councilman Green said. And if you have more questions, I would employ everyone to, you know, visit the state rep's office. And they'll be happy to explain how this committee structure can actually be beneficial for the city.
Mayor.
Can you speak to the time?
Mayor. Can she?
Well, hold on, we'll have questions up here first.
So can you speak to the time that these committee meetings will be?
So what you will notice too is that there won't be a set date. I mean, there won't be like every week a committee meeting. The committee meetings will be signed and set up as needed. But the meetings, we will make sure that they're convenient. We're still trying to work through that. It's either going to be the same day as council or may still be on the set day of deliberative. We're still trying to work through that to see how the schedules work. But we're not going to inconvenience everyone. So, give you an example, like city council's at 10 o'clock today. So we may end up having a committee meeting like at nine o'clock on the same day as council. Or we may have it on the deliberative day, which is on Monday. But we're still sorting through that. But we will let you know, we still have to advertise the committee meeting. So you will know well in advance. The other thing too is, as we start adopting and changing and fixing the agenda, we will probably more than likely already have the date scheduled on the agenda when you come into City Council. So you'll see the set date and time for the committee meeting as well. But like I said, this is the first day. We're working through that. We got to really work with council, are going to be working with council in order to really define what works best, not only for them, but for the constituents so we don't inconvenience everyone. But most places, they'll have a committee meeting, normally the same day as council, but just a couple, maybe an hour or so before. But we're going to work through that.
You can save your comment for public comment. Well, let's save it for public comment. Anything else for Chief? Thank you. Do we have any old business we want to share with our folks here? Any old business? Council lady? Councilman Green? No old business? I guess I could talk old business all day. I think the most exciting thing that happened in the past couple days is a grant that came through for the city of Chester. It wasn't a grant that we applied for specifically from Chester, but it's $2.5 million to help aid in the engineering study of, what are they calling it? A road diet? We're just getting control of this road right out here. That's 291. We've known for too long since the road has been opened in the Chester portion since 1999 that it has been a dangerous road for a lot of reasons. Number one, speeding. Number two, a lack of a light at Jeffrey Street. And I think one of the worst portions of the road as it's designed right now is that we have a lot of residents who live along the city side of 291 who can barely get in and out of their cars because the road just comes right up to their driver's side doors. And these are, many of these homes don't have a back entrance to their house. And then there's the case of people making left turns from the city side onto 291 where they have to cross two lanes of traffic many times with cars parked right at the corner and those trees, which make it virtually impossible to see. So the work that this $2.5 million is going toward has already started. The county has already offered, I think, four or five options as to how the road's going to look. Everything from one lane in each direction to two lanes in one direction, one lane in the other direction, flower pots in the middle of the street. I mean, they have all kind of solutions here. But, you know, it's really exciting to see that the US Department of Transportation has finally heard us. One of the most chilling facts about Route 291 is that in, since 2017, there have been 290 accidents on that road, which includes, you know, fatalities. So we know how dangerous the road is. We hear from you. We've been hearing from people for years. The county planning department is doing the work. And to get $2.5 million to complete the study is important. Some people would argue that Chester gets studied all the time. Like, we are the most studied town in the state. And this is another example of us being studied. But it's going to come with some real results. So look for that. I know the traffic light is probably getting closer to being installed at Jeffrey Street. I think there are some matching funds that need to happen. And it's not a lot of money. And we're all trying to point the finger at each other. Who should come up with a, I don't even think it's $50,000 to complete getting that traffic light. But it's been approved, just looking for some money to finish the job. So that's the most important old business. Let's go through this new business. On our agenda, we have the creation of these budgets. This will probably be the only day I'll read through all of it. It's intended to be the point in which each of the committee chairs give their report. But I'll just blow through it real fast to name the committees. And what you'll, what you'll hear is that the committee names are very closely related to the departments that were headed by council people in the past. So this was an intentional move from the council people running departments through, as it's called, the Roots Compromise with the receiver going to court and making some administrative changes throughout the city. We've finally gotten to that point where, at least through this period of receivership plan of adjustment, that we can create the committees that are, as explained by Councilman Green, Councilman Davis, you know, very common in other cities across, across the country, in essence. Whether it's cities, townships, or even boroughs. Before I read them off, I'm going to go to a resolution. I guess it's become old business because it's already been passed, but it's new business because it's today. And it was the one, Resolution Number 22, where the city of Chester has approved a community engagement fund for elected officials. What this is, is a small pot of money that all of us up here can use to go out here and hear from you guys right in the communities. So it sort of supports the committee structure, but it doesn't have anything tied into ordinances or policies. It's what we would call back in your day as a liaison, sort of the, what were you calling it? Town hall meetings or just going out in the community? Listening sessions, yeah. So we just don't want to listen. We want to feed you while you're there. So that's what this fund is for, is to just provide refreshments and materials so that when all of us go around town to hear from you guys, we can do it looking professional. I've already started with the lunches for mayors. And we just felt it made more, well, made sense to also make provisions for our council people to go out and have the same ability to engage with the community at their discretion. I think you have one coming up real soon that you can announce right now.
Yep. So we're having a town hall meeting, community listening session that will be on Thursday, April the 11th. Excuse me. It will be here in the community room. And so I found it, it's important that as we move into this new structure, that we begin to hear from residents. Because us as council, we have to not only create ordinances, but update a lot of the ordinances and policies and procedures that's currently on the books. And so it's important that we hear from the community of what you guys would like and what you want to see and how you want to see the movie, the city move forward. And so we're going to have our community listening session. And also, when I worked in the community liaison department, we did a number of community listening sessions. So I invited our former community liaison director, Lisa Dennis, to come out and help facilitate the night. Also, our, a number of our department heads will be there and the chief of staff will be there. And there will also be the time where the community members, you guys can ask questions and we can answer them. As they stated before, City Council is not where you get a chance to do, really do a Q and A. So meetings like this where we're out in the community and we're meeting with residents, that's the time that we can really do a Q and A. And we can get into detail. And you guys can ask mayor, council, mayor and department heads the different questions that you have. So I encourage each and every one of the residents to come out. And again, like the mayor said, we're going to be providing food. So hopefully you guys can come out and put your input and really help us move the city forward and create some new ordinances and update some, you know, ordinances. So that way we can help the city work more efficiently. Thank you.
So, so that's April 11th at what time?
It's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
And location? City Hall?
Community room, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. That was well done, Councilman Green. I just want to, I guess, add or maybe even subtract a little bit what you said. It really isn't all about just creating ordinance. It's really about listening. Just like the young man who came up earlier talking about potholes in his area. That's the top, that's the type of stuff we need to hear. Potholes, trees, you know, all your issues. We want to be able to bring them in. And if it makes sense that there needs to be a law put in place in order to correct some of these issues, that's where the ordinance and policy thing comes into play. But it's really all about giving you guys an opportunity to speak your mind when we're not showing up in suits and ties. You know, we can just sit out there, be casual, give you as much time as you need. I will not guarantee that, you know, you'll see all of mayor and council and chiefs and directors at all these listening sessions. But, you know, we will be there to listen, jot down your comments, and get back to you on a, on a direct basis. So I'm really excited to see that moving, that we're moving in that direction. Let's go back to these committees. What I'm going to do is read what the committee's names are and who are on these committees as council people. It starts with Budget and Finance Committee. It's going to be chaired by Councilman Davis. And myself and Council Lady West will be on that committee. There's a Community and Economic Development Committee, chaired by Council Lady Gibson. And on that team will be Councilman Green and Davis. I will chair the Human Resources Administration and Appointments Committee along with Councilman Davis and Gibson. Parks and Rec Committee will be chaired by Councilman Green with Weston Davis joining him. Public Safety Committee will be chaired by myself with Council Lady Gibson. Councilman Green joining. Public Works Committee Chair will be Council Lady West, joined by Councilman Green, Council Lady Gibson. And finally, there's a Rules, Chambers, Intergovernmental Relations and Strategy Committee, chaired by myself and joined by Council Lady West and Green. There are some comments there that we haven't met since last council meeting or that there were meetings. Those are just placeholders to let you know what it's going to look like on the agendas in the future. The following thing that you see there is a controller's report. As you can see, there's no report for this meeting. But this will be the time in the meeting where our controller will talk money, talk finances. Is there any other new business from council that you'd like to share? I'd like to say right behind me, right as I was walking in today, and behind me, for those of you who aren't here, is Avenue of the States. Our Public Works Department was out in force cleaning out, cleaning up the Avenue of the States. They've been going all around the city this week doing some big illegal dumping, removal. But I thought it was really cool that they included in their work to have all forces right out here on the street. It means a lot to our business district. You know, the gateway to the city, which I love, terminates right here at City Hall. You know, my objective is that these, these couple blocks out here have to get spruced up. We know that the, particularly the artist community have taken over a lot of these buildings and have done a phenomenal job making useful spaces of a lot of these old buildings. Most of it are art-related or performance spaces. But as you drive up and down, well, can't drive up and down, but as you drive down the street, the facades don't match what's on the inside. We had a couple important people through town last week, one being the Secretary of the Department of Community and Economic Development, the other being a deputy for the governor who's the governor, who's Deputy of Economic Development. We took a riding tour around the city and the question that was asked was like, if you had one thing that we could help you with, what would it be? And it's the strip right here. You know, if you look at the city as a baseball field, you know, you have to have a home plate where things begin and things end. And this is what I see right out here. If I can get our state people who claim they want to help us, I'm going to keep on their case to help support what they call their Main Street initiatives. They're doing it across the state. It's just a matter of getting them to focus here. And I think we're getting a lot of attention in that realm. So, that's what we're looking for from our state officials. So, I'm putting it on record for those of you who are watching. It's public comment time. So, I hope all you guys have signed up who want to provide public comment today. If you haven't, you still have an opportunity to. I'm never going to cut anybody off in case you came in a little late. If you think of something, oh, here comes Rowan Williams. Come on, man. Sign the form.
Oh, yeah.
It's right over here. You don't go first, though.
No.
No, you don't go first. You got to take your hat off, too. I'm a Phillies fan, too. I know it's spring training.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, no, I'm not a Philly fan, but I'm here.
You're not a Philly fan?
No.
You're just a homie, a homer?
I like the Yankees.
You like the Yankees. Why did I even bring it up? Can you pass that down, Ken?
Yeah, go, Kenny.
You got a couple more.
I didn't know. Hey, baby, how you doing?
Just put it back where you got it from.
I ain't getting it, man. He bring it out there.
Are there others that need to sign that?
Somebody else needs to sign.
They may need to sign that as well.
And while they are signing that paper, in old business or new business, I just want to give a shout out to Councilwoman Gibson and TruVine Church. I joined Councilwoman Gibson yesterday as they was doing a few distribution and it was literally like hundreds of people out there. And so, I've seen you guys there. I've seen you there. I've seen a number of people there yesterday. And so, it is a really great thing that they're doing. So, I just want to give a big shout out to TruVine and I believe Stephanie is her name?
Sabrina Butler.
Sabrina Butler. And the amazing job that she does when it comes to helping feed the residents in the city of Chester. And they do it every Tuesday, starting at 10 o'clock on Morton Avenue at TruVine. So, if you get a chance to stop by.
12 o'clock.
Is it 12 o'clock?
12.
Okay, 12 o'clock on Tuesday. So, if you guys get a chance to stop by and support them too. So, thank you. And thank you, Councilman Gibson, for all you do. She's at all of the food drives and informing the people. She's the live queen, informing the people of what's happening in the city. And that is so important that our people know that this is happening. So, thank you.
We hate dead air, don't we?
Yeah.
So, I'm going to take this opportunity to congratulate my colleague up here on council, Councilman Shaquon Davis, who just had a baby.
Yeah.
Yeah. He says he's getting no sleep as new dads don't. But what I loved about a comment he shared with me is that it's helping him become a better student because he's awake so much, he has more study time.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you all. I'm excited to be a new dad. As of right now, it's the biggest blessing that I've ever received in my life. I'm enjoying it. Definitely losing a lot of sleep, but it's helped me get my work done. For those who don't know, I'm currently in my master's program at West Chester University. And it's helped me. It's helped me. I'm losing sleep, but it's helped me get some work done at the same time. So, I'm enjoying it. So, thank you all for your support. Thank you.
A boy.
A little boy.
And we named him Shiloh. So, he's Shiloh Horace Davis. Named him after my uncle and my father and myself. And that's also the reason I have the mask on today, new baby. He hasn't got his first shots yet, so I'm trying to stay sanitized and, you know, stay protected.
That's right.
Got the timer?
Yes.
Althea, I'm sorry, Althea Davis Moses. I got it wrong? Al? All right. So, state your name since I got it wrong.
It's Alithia.
Alithia.
Davis Moses. It's Greek. It means truth.
I should have known that because she sat in my office, but I'm sorry.
Okay. Please excuse me. This is my first time, so I really don't know what to say or what to do.
Well, you have three minutes, so get it together quickly.
Okay.
Get to your key points.
I got you.
And it's a public comment, not question and answer.
Okay.
All right.
First, I would like to say, yes, Councilman Gibson is the best. She lets us know everything. I would also like to say thank you to the mayor for listening when I did come in to speak with him. Thank you to Commissioner Gretzky with me speaking with him also. And my question, I just have a question. I want to know, what is the time period when things do go wrong in your community, when you already have the answers that you need to set things in motion? What is the time period to get those things done? And what I mean is if you already have who did what, when, and why, what is the time limit on getting those things put in place to have something done about it?
Okay.
That's it.
I got it.
Good job.
Jemel Cotman. Did he leave?
Yeah.
Anita Littleton. Ladies first, sir. You're next. Okay.
Oh, please. You're terrible.
You're not going to get a chance.
Good morning, mayor, council, and the residents of Chester City. We are very pleased and happy to hear about the new structure of the committees that are happening in the city of Chester. One thing that we are hoping is that the community input will be something that is taken very, very serious. And although I heard that the council will be conducting business as usual and making the decisions on the resolutions, I think it's important that community members somehow can have a greater influence so that we don't continue to repeat in times past where maybe you have a council that could be stuck on an issue, right? And the community members can be very well against it. We want to make sure that there is a fair process for that and that the community residents of this city are indeed being heard and taken in consideration of what the elected officials were elected for to work in their behalf. And also, we want this council to continue to consider the many residents of Chester City. There are approximately 34,000 of us who feel like they're still disconnected. We have to work on some type of way to, you know, mend this gap of communication with senior citizens who cannot get to these meetings. It would be nice to have council maybe go out and really get engagement in this community. And lastly, I want to talk about the Hispanic community who feels disconnected from this city as we are engaging on a regular basis. I know that the council informer talked about having a translator. I think it's important that we reach out to that community and let them know that they are a part of Chester City. They want to be here, but we need to make sure that things are set up for them. Did a bell go off? I still have a couple seconds. Okay. And also regarding the committee processes, and I heard Councilman West talk about the clerk being the point person. The City of Chester has a lot of work to do and I know that we need new structures, but we have to be very careful that we are not continuing new structures that are continuing the same pattern. One person cannot do the level of work that the city needs. And I would suggest that the clerk is not overwhelmed with an additional responsibility to do research, that there has to be something different. Maybe you will utilize the council who has been elected by the city to take part in that as well as the director heads that's going to be doing this. It's important that we are able to move forward, okay, effectively and not still repeating same processes with just, you know, new systems, okay? That's really important. But more importantly, this resident, the community of this city, has to feel important. And furthermore, when it comes to things like this, we have to find a way for those who are not on social media, who are not able to come to these meetings, to know what's happening in our city, like how to, you know, follow through with these new structures and that they're here. And again, I want to continue to speak out loudly for the seniors of this city who are pillars, who have fought hard in this city, who have contributed very greatly in this city, that they are not, continue to feel excluded. And if we have to reach out to them in a specific way, that they are a part of this city moving forward. Thank you so much. And is, one last question. Is the right to know, are those still in effect?
Yes.
Okay. And lastly, I did leave a message for the mayor's office. I won't bring that up here, but I would like to get an answer for that if someone can call me back about the question that I left on your answer machine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cotman.
Good morning, mayor, council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Came here today because, for two things. One is, y'all doing a great job. That's part one. On Ninth and, right on Ninth Street, on the east side area, we have no traffic signs on Potter Street. So, from Morton Avenue all the way down to Upland Street, it's a racetrack. It's worse than 291 on that street. Is there any way we could try to get a stop sign, a light back at Potter Street like it used to be? Because one, as a business owner, I have a water rice place right there. Last year, a little child got hit because a car was flying by. So, is there any way we could either put a stop sign there, made a light back on Potter Street, put a slowdown sign in that area, or something like that? I know that that area, Main Ninth Street, is on state highway and they treat it as a state highway. See, so what can we do about that? Also, I would like to invite everyone out today. Jane on Water Rice will be open today and we're giving free water rices out. So, come on over and get some free water rice.
I'll be there.
What time does that start? Two to seven, okay. Mr. Williams.
Good morning. How y'all doing this day?
All right.
Well, I come over here for the day, but all these holes on Wilson Street, damn hole so deep right there before you get to Ninth Street there. If you drop in there, you'll turn over. Has y'all got anybody going around checking the roads out and the holes out and different things? And another thing, I want to know about, like all this trash in different places. You can ride through the city on Third Street, look like a dump. Everybody dumping in them field over there. You got tree limb, pretty soon them woods rats gonna be in people's house. Because everywhere you look, they got piles of wood, old mattress furniture. Your name is there. I see a house right there on Water Street, half of the house done fall out in the middle of the street. Ain't nobody cleaning up. You come up to Third and Flowers, the bar fit the bus out. Somebody need to be getting something done with these old wrecked house. Get somebody, get a contractor, he ain't had a damn none, need to hire some mans here. We need to be doing something around Chester positive, getting something before we kill somebody chilling. Because it can happen. Because kids do skate and they ride bicycle. Because you been little once. And like you can go down on Suckin' Street, why y'all gonna bring your sweeper back and y'all cleaning up sweeping? Because we need to have a sweeper down there by me at least once a week. We don't have that no more. We had a man down there, one down on Holland Avenue, he clean all around by the house with a broom and a roller. He had a Georgia buggy. He had a special blade, he dumping the trash, people come out and pick it up. And then we need some, we need a lot of things done around here. We need to hire some more mans with the city. When y'all planning on doing that? Because to get things done, you need manpower. Don't you want to get it done? You can talk till you turn blue in the head, but it won't get done if you don't put manpower on it. And we need, like going down Third Street, that whole street need to be paved. I think about Chicago. And like, let me get back, touch a little bit on that storm sewage. Yesterday, I get a bill. Why y'all planning on doing something about that? You already paying Delco too much. They send me an estimate bill, because I come over there about two weeks ago and I had to pay them. And I take my bill. It'd be different if the water company sent an estimate bill to us and that the way you got to pay Delco. Every two months, I got to pay them a hundred something dollars. That too much money? Then I got to pay the storm in the sewage, $32. Why I'm eat chicken and rice with? Damn sure got to eat now and you got to take your medicine. We need a lot done around here. I appreciate if y'all can do it for us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Catherine Flag Justice.
I just had a question about the new process that you have in place. Part of my learning style is a visual learning style. And I'm wondering if you have a document that we can have, that we can use, we can familiarize ourselves with, or I can familiarize myself with, so I'll know how to work the process. So, would you have something that would familiarize the new process that you're doing? We will. Okay. And I really want to know what the purpose of the city council meeting? Why do you have a city council meeting? Thank you.
Good morning.
Mel Campbell here again. First of all, the stoplight that he's talking about, I don't go up and down Ninth Street that often. And I stopped there because last time I was there, there wasn't a stoplight there. Somebody almost rear-ended me. So, there's a need for that stop sign on Ninth Street. Or whatever you can get to control the traffic. The gentleman mentioned the Stormwater Authority. What is their deal? First of all, alls I do is see them ride around neighborhood. That's all they see, them ride around, sitting in trucks underneath shady trees. And our bill keeps going up, which is ridiculous anymore. They should not be raising it up like they do. It goes up $10 every time they raise it. There should be a smaller minimum. There should still be nothing. They shouldn't be here. But that was a previous council's idea to bring them in, to make money for us, or whatever they're supposed to do. Next thing I have to say is, I live on Main Street. There's a house across the street from me that backs up to me that's on 24th Street, 224 24th Street. They had a new owner come in there, new tenants. I'm assuming the tenants got a deal, if they clean up the place, they get rent for free or less money. They taking their trash when they clean this up. This has happened a bit ago because we called down here about this and they dumped it all on the property behind them. So, you got all this trash sitting up there. And it's... And it's, it's embarrassing when your family comes to visit you and they see this pile of trash, just like everywhere else you see in the city. This stuff has to stop. And I don't know if you guys are working on this now or not, but it has to stop. People just can't be dumping the trash everywhere. And let it set. There should be somebody riding around checking these neighborhoods out and see what's piling up where. Finding these people, unfortunate person we just find here is the wrong person, cause it's not on his property, it's on, those people threw the trash there. And we'll go to the property next to them, you got buses sitting there. They've been there, there were six or seven of them there. They've been, they've been towed once, then they came back. Well now, you got busted, windows and most of them, glass all over the place, the juveniles are going in there, well, they were going in there smoking their pot, now they're taking it to the basement of their house. So kind of wish this, this stuff would get addressed. You know, this is not just my complaint, there's other people in my fifteen houses block complaining about this. And I got nobody to complain to. All right, thank you very much, and good luck with your duties here.
Thank you, thank you. Then following her will be Kenneth Curry, if you wanted to just position yourself behind her.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, and residents of Chester. I came here with some great news for the city.
Ooh, great news.
My son, Moses Carter, is invited to the Olympics for this summer, 2024. So I'm just asking Chester to rally around behind him, if we can get some posters out, if you guys could help me put some posters out, and be ready for 2024 to bring home the gold. That's all I'm looking forward to, okay? His name is Moses Carter. Thank you.
Whoa, whoa, hold on there. What event is he?
Oh, he's a, um, kickboxer. Yeah, the US Kickboxing Team, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council, good morning, everybody. Y'all have two questions, I have, um, crossing guards. I'm retired now, I'm a crossing guard, they're not making any money, and I just want to know when can they get a raise in the situation, I've heard it been years before they had a raise. So I just wanted, I was curious about that. And also, I live on Beverly Lane and behind my house is Perkins Street. And they need speed bumps back there, cars are coming up and down there, flying. And could that, any way they could put some speed bumps back there?
All right, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for taking me.
Okay. Mr. Saleem.
I'd like to share with you very briefly, Inshallah, God's will. My name is Amina Abdul Saleem, I live 240 Passage Street in Chester here. People, you know, it says for the people and by the people, if I can use that expression. And certainly the people have a lot to say about what, uh, goes on, if I can just get right to the point. And my concern here is that they will not know or not be, uh, instrumental or whatever the good word for that on, you know, what's going on. I, uh, this is very important. I've done this for a long period of time, I mentioned, and, uh, it's just like, I'm not sure if the people are in this intelligently, you know, man means mind, so certainly, you know, we gotta be in this intelligently, not talking above our heads and so forth. So this was easy, and to me, it's getting a little bit hard, you know? But the bottom line, Inshallah, I may say, God is in charge of all affairs, and they can rise up, if it's not right, come, come on back down, you know, God would not bring them on back down. So this is a, uh, good that I feel in my heart, you know, until we understand better what is going on here. The bottom line, sir, is that it says, uh, uh, you know, try this, you know, we done tried everything else, you know, now try your Lord, you know, your Lord come, this comes after everything else has been tried and failed. So with that, sir, I, I just wanted to just mention that, I think that's as far as I want to go at this point. I, I thank you very much, sir. And about those potholes, you know, if I may, uh, you know, the scripture speaks of God using, there would be so much rain that whoever roof is not affected would be who, he who live in a tent. So God didn't attend all this mess on, on his earth. So it's gonna rain, rain, rain to get rid of this man's, uh, doing. And, and when it, God do a thing, it's, it's gonna society, you know, get down, but, yeah. So you got potholes, and by the leave of our Lord and mercy and grace, but, but these things will leave us go away, so that's what I'm hoping for, Inshallah, God's will.
Yes, good morning to everyone.
Move that mic closer to your face, or mouth.
Okay.
And just say your name.
Margaret Brown.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor, I'd like to bring up, this is not new to you, cause you were sitting up on city council, but some of the buildings that have fallen down and the new ones that have just fallen down were bought up during our previous mayor. The building at Third and Ward Street where I reside at, I went past that building, and when I came back an hour later, it was on the ground, literally the whole front of the building, cause there was no back or roof to it, so it just came in. The building at Third and Wilson that I reported, and the mayor told me, well, anybody had a right to build, to buy the building, well, they did, but then for some reason the work stopped. So now you're sitting there with a building that only has the sides to it, no inside whatsoever, and we're just waiting for that building to also collapse. It's gonna be right in the street. Uh, the building at Third and Palmer, that was another one. It is completely, every time it rains, it's a little bit more falling in. The lady on the side that's connected to it, uh, I think she's, has nothing to do with the tearing down, but when that building finally goes, it's gonna take part of her house, literally just take it away. Um, also, at Second and Ward, where the stones and the dirt is piled up in the gated yard, it's now, the trucks are being added into that yard, but nobody seems to, you know, do anything about that. And that's been reported to the D, um, the Department of Environmental Protection, that has been reported to them, and then back to Chester where they say, well, get Chester to do something about it first. There's also every time it rains, since stormwater is responsible for the water in the street and the storms, every time it rains, that water piles up, it's a dip, comes down, cause it's at the bottom. So we're getting plenty of water there. I just want to know now, that these things are old and they have been reported, that now it's time that they're being taken care of, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to respond to some of these comments. To Ms. Alethea, who asked the question, what's the time period to get things done when, you know, residents have information that they want to share with either us internally, police departments, but with police departments, of course, investigations take time, so can't tell you how long anything is going to take. And I think what you're hearing overall are some of the ongoing problems that have been in the city for a long time, particularly old cities like ours with, you know, buildings that are a hundred years old, that have had, you know, owners who haven't kept them up, that have been abandoned for a long time, buildings that were built in rows that have holes in between the rows, compromising, you know, everything on that block, uh, digging, you know, all those things, truck traffic with the vibrations, trains, airplanes. Yeah, I mean, we can go through every neighborhood and, and give a list of, you know, all these issues. Can they all get fixed by next week? You know, probably not. Does it take money? Probably so. But what I don't ever want to stop happening are people like yourself and, and Mr. Williams to keep bringing us that information. We need to keep hearing it, we need to, you know, address each one of them one at a time. We need you guys to be the eyes and ears out here. To your point, Mr. Brown, about somebody riding around the city, just identifying, uh, issues and bringing it back to City Hall, we know that used to be the case. I remember Mr., uh, Irv Lawrence used to be that dude, everybody, nobody liked Mr. Irv Lawrence, because he'd ride around particularly on the weekends, and if he saw a construction truck somewhere, uh, in somebody's house, you know, he'd walk in the house and start sighting you and, and looking for permits. You know, sometimes that's a little overreaching, but more importantly, it's, you know, somebody that works for the city with those eyes and ears out there doing that work on our behalf. We don't have that luxury right now of manpower, which you mentioned before, but it's something that we're building on. Uh, again, we're, we're counting on you guys to come to us in a proper manner, uh, going through the channels that we do have, going to the right department heads, council people. I wish our council people were in councilmatic districts, so you can go right to a council person for that side of town, but we're not at that point yet. What we have to stop doing though, as, as a community, is making twenty-five phone calls to City Hall to twenty-five different people. It's impossible for us to control this at that point. If you make a call to a single person, to the department head or to the departments, you gotta count that that department's doing the work. To Ms. Littleton's point with regard to communication, we've got to do a better job, and it's a real mission of ours to come up with a citywide comp plan. With regard to the Hispanics in the city, I will say that some of our most recent hires, with regard to people that have public facing jobs here, like in LNI and, and on our front desk, we're seeking bilingual, uh, you know, clerks in that area and, you know, in all areas around town. I think we've hired probably more Spanish speaking employees in the last couple of months than has been hired here for years. I know you speak on behalf of many communities, Ms. Littleton, and I will say for the Hispanic community, we're City Hall, the doors are open, come on in, let's talk. I don't see a lot of them, uh, even represented here tonight. I am out in the community almost asking like, uh, like, like, uh, those old sci-fi movies, like Take Me To Your Leader. I want to know who is the person representing the Hispanic community out here. I want to talk to them, I want to meet them, I want to form a relationship with the Hispanic community. Uh, no one's presented me that leader or leaders out there. I absolutely want to meet them. So if you know who they are, send them my way. Uh, let's just keep going here. Uh, Ninth Street between Morton and, and Potter, yeah, that's, that's, that's Penn Dot. Uh, I will say, our relationship with Penn Dot is each day getting better. Um, we're, we're, they're, they're getting to know us, they're listening to us, they're responding to us in a much faster fashion than they did before. Today, we just approved the contract with our, our new engineering firm, 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 engineering firm, firm, firm. I say that a million times because that's so important. We've had a good engineer here for a number of years, in Mike Colante, but he's a single person who, you know, has a specialty, has a expertise, and would always contract out to others to fill gaps. Now we have a full firm with a full complement of engineers. One of the things that they're charged with right away is to help us do a, a road safety survey, just to go around town, look at the roads. We already have money invested in doing this survey, we're waiting for results. How close are we to getting results there, Mr. Lightner? I know we...
We are, I would say maybe a couple months out.
Couple months out, so it's not like this is being ignored. We're, we've got somebody that we've paid, that's going around town, looking at all our roads, telling us the conditions, and at the end of all this, they will prioritize the worst roads to, well, the worst, the worst roads first. Uh, in the past, we've only used liquid fuels money to, to help pave roads in this town, it's not a lot of money, and I think as a result of that, we got maybe one or two blocks done every year when applied. That is nowhere near enough. Like I said, our objective is to get the equipment in-house ourself. Um, I'll give you a perfect example, I was at St. Luke's Church a couple Sundays ago, one of the trustees pulled me out, and, and we all know who live here in Chester, St. Luke's is the church that has had, you know, all the funerals through COVID, you know, they've been affectionately renamed St. Luke's Funeral Home. But one of the attractions of St. Luke is the fact that on that side road, which is Fourth Street, they can roll caskets right out of the Hearst. Is that what it's called? No, thanks, he's in that business. Right out of the Hearst into the church, right on the first floor, right at the front of the church, but right now, there's a pothole there, and they were like, we can't do it anymore. I think we took care of that, right, Mark? Yes, so, you know, we use coal patch to take care of it, but we're, we're gonna need a permanent fix, because once it gets cold again, that's gonna happen. We know the roads are bad, we're, we're prioritizing how to solution it. Stormwater, for all of you who have questions about Stormwater Authority, please go to the Stormwater Authority Board Meetings. The one meeting that I attended, I will say it was attended by one person from the community, me. You know, they need to see you, they need to hear from you. Yeah, it is an authority that was created out of this body, and we should know what's going on, and, and just this week, I've requested, uh, you know, some documentation for them to get a better idea of what's going on. We'll see if I get that information. But with regard to those of you who have issues, problems with the bills, with the service that they're provided, you gotta go to their meetings, you gotta show up. Well, you gotta find out, I mean, I'm... That's, that's, that's correct. Uh, why do we have city council meetings? Really?
Say, just saying, maybe just go to the Stormwater Office, it's fine, you know, if you're, you're Stormwater.
Okay, so it was shared that you could just go to the Stormwater Office? The address is, uh, Thirty-One East Fifth Street, it's the old Brenmark Trust Building? Knock on the door, go in there and ask, ask your questions. Uh, why do we have city council meeting? It's to handle city business. It's to do what we did earlier on, approve, not approve, ordinances, resolutions, that's primarily what a city council meeting is. It is to handle city business. Because it's city business and because it affects all the citizens of the city, people like yourself are invited to join and see us conduct our business. Thankfully, we have video cameras now for people who can attend. Uh, who mentioned, uh, Ms. Littleton, again, mentioned the clerks and the role they're gonna play on council. We have just assigned a second clerk to the clerk's office to help support, but unlike state legislators like our own, uh, State Rep. Carol Kazim, or our senators like our own John Kane out here, we don't have the type of money they have to, uh, to have a staff do the kind of work that we're talking about, looking up information and doing the research. So we as a legislative body, which includes me, oftentimes we've, we've got to do the digging, but to have a couple clerks, you know, there to help us really is, is all we have to work with. Ooh, boy. Piles of trash all over the city, of course there's piles of trash all over the city, that's nothing new, we, we know that. Uh, like I just mentioned earlier, uh, thanks to... mentioned earlier, thanks to Mark Alexander and his crew, he's assigned our guys in Public Works. I mean, every day, that's what they're doing. They're picking up trash. You don't know about that? So I tell you what, if you don't know about that, we need to make it more public. So somehow, we're going to solution that. We're going to, just like I did when I was a, you know, Director of Parks and Rec, I would always have those guys let me know what parks they were cutting. So let's talk about the locations that we're going to on a daily basis, picking up bulk trash, so people will know. Let's take pictures of the before, the during, and the afters, so people will see that that's what we do eight hours a day. We kind of lighten up in the summertime because we have to cut grass, you know, with that same bit of personnel. But unfortunately, our Public Works staff is, I'd say, good 90% of their time is picking up the trash, when Public Works involves a whole lot more than picking up the trash. What's the issue with trash? You know, it's a state of mind, it's a bunch of people who just see us as a dumping ground. Those are things we have to correct on the front end. I, I, I will say, we met with Covanta this week. Covanta is very interested in helping us with particularly the illegal bulk trash they have offered, and will provide a big old truck with four people in it that will basically take care of 291 and maybe even Third Street and maybe as far as Fourth Street. But basically, their end of town, they're going to be out there throwing mattresses in their truck and anything they see on the street with, you know, no, no charge to us. It's just their way of, of finally, after beating them upside the head so much, saying to them, you know, all the trash ends up there anyways, there any way you can help. They're listening, and they're going to provide us with some support in that area. Crossing Guard raises. I'm not really in position to talk about that, but I know there's some activity going on with, with crossing guards. Are we putting out an RFP? Have we put, we have, we have put out an RFP for a new service to provide crossing guards on behalf of the city and the school district. So that's in the works. Speed bumps, speed bumps are always tricky. Certainly can't put them on state roads. On city streets, we may have to figure out a way to, to do something with speed bumps, even if they're temporary-type speed bumps, not the ones that are, you know, part of the street, but something we can lay down for a couple hours. But it's going to take neighbors to go out there and make sure they're up and down. One of the worst things that speed bumps create is a headache during snowstorms when our plows are out there. As we can see, our winters aren't as snowy as they used to be in the past, so that's not an excuse we can, we can continue to rely on. Speed bumps is something we need to talk about moving forward. Yes.
The executive session was Stormwater and briefly Engineering.
Okay, thank you. Oh, street sweeper, that came up. That's another thing, another item you want to bring up with the Stormwater Authority. I think they have two street sweeping trucks. If you don't see them out there, you need to ask why. At a glance, that's about everything that I see. Before I ask you guys to comment, I want to do one thing. And, Mr. Lightner, can you share with, with us some of the personnel shuffles that we've made around? Because people are kind of used to seeing certain people in certain spots around city government. So we know we've moved a few people recently. Could you kind of give us a primer on what that is? I know I'm putting you on the spot here. And it's, it's going to be an ever-moving target here. What, what we always attempt to do is put people in places where they can be most effective, and in some cases, well, that's really the, the purpose of what we're doing, as well as to better serve you as citizens. So give me some of the more recent changes we've made.
You are putting me on the spot. As far as personnel changes internally, how it really affects you, I guess that's what we want to look at, is you mentioned the city clerk. We are moving Ms. Joan Nill. She was in zoning. She's going to be the other member as far as city clerk goes. So we'll have two, Ms. Candace Newsom and Ms. Joan Nill that are actually going to be working in the city clerk's office. As far as staffing goes internally, Mr. Mark Alexander is the interim director for Public Works. We have Ms. Stephanie Hall, who's working in Park and Recreation. Those are recent changes. We're still looking to hire a Director of Human Resources. As the mayor said, we did lose our engineer, but we brought in an engineering firm. So we'll have several different engineers that are working on particular projects. There are more new hires coming. We have HR's swamped right now with trying to bring in talent. There are several positions posted on the website, but right now, we're in the process of looking at hiring, like I said, an HR director. We're looking at our planning and zoning department. We need to get a planning director in there, a zoning officer in there as well, which would help with some of the issues you're complaining about, about houses falling down, improper use of certain facilities. So we're working on that as well. I think that should cover the basics or the major ones. Is there anyone in particular you're looking for?
Ms. Pinter?
Oh, Ms. Pendergast, yes. She's sitting right here. Ms. Kim Pendergast is working as our new zoning supervisor. That took place on Monday. So she'll be handling, working in the planning and zoning department. So those are the recent changes that have taken place in the last couple of weeks. Again, we have some new hires here as well, but we'll, we can go over those later.
Chief, if you would kindly do so, can you explain to them, because some people may not know the actual role of a city clerk and how they function in other municipalities, so that they can get a better understanding of what, not her new role is, but the role that should have been playing all along, if that makes any sense?
Absolutely. So what Councilman Green is referring to is, as you all know, we operate based off the third-class city code. So the third-class city code, as we go through these reorganizations, we want everybody to understand, we're not just doing this because we have nothing else better to do, but we're following what the code says. The third-class city code governs us on how we conduct business. And in the third-class city code, it outlines many of our job duties and responsibilities. So the clerk's responsibility and job duties is to support city council. You can read it right in the third-class city code. That's what their job is, is to support city council, which is why you see the city clerk up on the dais. They take the notes. They prepare the minute meetings. They prepare the agenda. Those are some of the changes that you're going to, you won't see it, but as you see the changes happening, those are internal changes that we're making. But the city clerk also will be supporting them when we talk about research. If city council, when they're having their committee meeting, or they're having their listening session with you as a community, they're going to be listening to what you're asking. So some of the things you're asking for may require a change in the law. It may require change in processes or policies. That's what they're going to be doing. As they're listening, they're taking that information so they can determine what's on the books right now. I, I can give, I'll give you an example. We talked about the, I think, one of the, I think, sir, you brought it up. If you go to a house and they're dumping, we know they're doing construction out there, and they're dumping their, their garbage on the side yard or in the front. So our current law, our current ordinance, which is housed in Public Works, requires a dumpster if you're doing construction work. However, if you get the dumpster, it's only required to get a dumpster, and if you're going to put it on the street. But there's no requirement for a dumpster if you're doing construction work. So if somebody can be doing construction work and just decide that they want to dump it in the back of their pickup truck, and then they haul it somewhere else, but where they haul it to, we don't know. They probably haul it right down the street and dump it somewhere on the road. So there's no law on the books, right? So sometimes, I know contractors are in the audience right now, and people will probably get upset about that stuff, but this is, but this is the stuff that, as constituents, you have to bring to council. And this is the part where listening sessions take place, committee meetings take place. But that's an example of, there's a law on the books that requires a dumpster, only if you get the dumpster, if it's going to be placed on the street. But again, it doesn't address the illegal dumping. It doesn't address when somebody's doing construction work and they're dumping it out in the side yard or in the front yard. It doesn't address that. So when council is considering and listening to what you're saying, this is one of the thoughts they got to think about. Do we put something in place? Do we put a law in place? So this is where the city clerk would come in. They would ask that question. The city clerk would do research. What are other third-class cities doing? What, what's the nation doing? So this is where the, the city clerk comes in, and they would research that type of information that you, that you bring back to council. Council wants to work with the city clerk and figure out how they do that. So as you see, we're moving forward, we are moving forward, but it takes time to do these type of things, and it's also getting our staff trained up into what their roles and responsibilities are. So I want everyone to kind of understand that it is a process. Everything you're saying over the last year that I've been here is being heard. Council, here's what you're saying. They've brought it to, to our attention. We're working to reorganize our staff structure so we can meet your needs and your requests. Some of the stuff you ask for, we don't have the resources. I think the gentleman brought up about more manpower. But again, manpower affects finances, and if our finances are right, we can't hire more people. But sometimes, we just have to adjust our staffing in order to meet those needs. That's why they're asking me to talk to you about the reorganization. So some of the stuff we're doing, we're reorganizing staff, reorganizing staff with their skill sets and responsibilities. We're providing council with the resources they need in order to address your needs, to look at. Some of these situations are a lot more in-depth. Like I said, some of it may require law changes. Some of it may require new laws on the book. Some of it may require us just to readjust our staffing structure. But you're being heard. It takes time. And again, we, we're, I'm always open and available to listen to you, but also at the same time, you got to talk to your council members, and then we work together. We'll figure that out. They come and ask me, you know, what can we do? We'll work with the city clerk to do research on other third-class cities, and then we come up with a solution. And if I can't, just one, one more thing. Someone brought up about the, the structure and about us talking about the committees. I want to say this one more time so it's clear, so everyone understands. What you, what we do with the committees is giving you three chances to talk as a community. So in the introduction, so when they're introducing a new bill in council, that's the introduction, you get a chance to comment at that introduction. So you can make your comments, your voice is at the introduction of a bill. And then when they have the committee meeting, you have a second chance to make your comments. And you know if it's going to be at a committee meeting, you bring the rest of the constituents in, flood the House, and then tell them, these are the questions you have at a committee meeting. That's your second chance you get to talk about something you're not happy with, or a bill, or a structure. And then the third chance you get is when they bring it back to council, and then they vote on it. You still get a third shot to talk about it. So for anyone that says that this structure or what we're doing is not making sense, sit down to talk with us. And I'm just not saying, I'm not saying anyone in particular, but you have to understand the process, right? We're giving you more opportunities as a community to talk. You're giving you more opportunities to really talk with your council people up here, to really express your concerns. You expressed a dislike in the, in the conversation we just said here, but you bring it up at a committee meeting, not at a council meeting where we're arguing and fighting. That's not what we're, we're trying to do. This is a professional meeting, so we're giving you the opportunity to voice your opinion, your wholehearted opinion at a committee meeting tactfully, professionally, and we can discuss it there. And then that's where the city clerk would have to, if, again, there's things that we don't agree with, we go back and we bring our legal team in, the city clerk looks at third-class cities, and we can provide you with data, analysis, on information on why we're making the decision we're making, or why we're trying to go that direction. So I hope you all understand that. That's why we're structuring. You're going to see people in different places. You might call a number, you may not see that same employee there, because we are shuffling employees to different spots based off skill sets, abilities, and responsibilities. All right?
Thank you so much. He said he was put on the spot. Look at that. He gave a, a whole lecture there, but thank you. That was very comprehensive. And I just want to follow up on one thing that, that he talked about with regard to ordinances and, and staffing. So one of the ordinances that we passed not, not too long ago was a $200 rental registration fee. That $200 is not a random number that we just grabbed out of the air. It's a number that represents the amount of money that we need to pay staff, hire staff, hire the equipment that they need to do, the work that rental registration results in, inspections, inspectors, vehicles for inspectors to get to their job, laptops or, or tablets that inspectors can put the information in so it can expedient, lent, expedient, so it can quickly go to that apartment, right, to that department right outside the door, and they don't have to shuffle for papers anymore. There has been some pushback from landlords who say, oh, my God, $200 a year is a lot of money. And, and for those that have, you know, 40, 50, 60, you know, apartments, yeah, that's, that's a big, that's, that's a big expense, and, and we're working with, with, with some of them. But by the same token, we're getting some great cooperation around the city. So not only is it helping us identify who our landlords is, the whole program is built to build a department that can manage itself internally. So just wanted, just wanted to make that point, how all this stuff works together. And in time, it, it does have the result, it will have the results that, that we're looking for. Hey, Dr. J, come on up and say hello to, to your new city. He's, I think, our newest employee. I don't think there's anyone newer than Dr. J. Just give everybody your whole name and what department you're working in, and just say hello to, to us here.
Absolutely. My name isn't Dr. J, it's actually Justin Feliciano, but there's two Justins here working, so I go by the name of Dr. J. But I'll be the new recreation program coordinator here with the city of Chester. So I greatly look forward to connecting with the community and helping build up our Parks and Recreation Department.
Now, based on that last name, I'm going to assume you speak another language.
Good thing that's an assumption, because unfortunately, I do not. However, I do understand Spanish quite an extent. I just can't fluently speak it back.
Okay, thanks for sharing that.
All right, thank you.
Never make an assumption, right? All right. Counsel, it's your turn.
Yes. I always believe that community engagement is very important, and I often hear people say, I want to be involved. I want to be, I want to know what's going on. And so we have several vacancies that need to be filled, and we would love for you guys to come in and fill those seats on those boards. There's a one-page application, am I correct? One-page application that you can submit. Anyone can submit an application, bring it in, let us look over the application and, and put you in the best place that you're able to serve. But we have a Stormwater Authority that's have, has vacancies, and the zoning board is another one. And so don't leave out of here today without going downstairs, filling out an application, and be a part of this great community in the city of Chester.
Thank you.
That was a great point. That was on my list, too. But it's not just two boards, it's like, how, how many boards? About 20? There's about 20 boards with vacancies. And so if you really want to be a part of the community, and you want to be a part of the change, and you want to help this city grow, please apply to these boards so that you guys can help us move the city forward. And, and you can be on more than one board, too. Yes.
I believe there will be on the website soon. We are actually going through all the boards in the city, which ones have vacancies, and which term is expected to expire soon. And all of that information, the chief and Justin will be putting on the website, and you guys can come in and fill out an application for any board you would like to be on. Also, Ms. Anita, when you talked about the clerk and maybe her having more responsibilities or too much, and that was, that was the reason I asked Mr. Lightner to explain that. So a lot of her roles now, the duties that she's doing, she really shouldn't be doing. It should be in HR. And so a lot of her duties will be moved to HR, and she'll be doing exactly what the clerk should be doing in a third-class city. Then also, there's now an assistant city clerk that will help her along with that process. So she'll have the support she needs. So she'll have the support she needs, and they'll be able to provide us with the support that we as council.
My counsel is for the, uh, for the council, because it was said that the council will no longer be doing that. That's what counsel was from West Hampton. And that's to clarify, I understand what the, the duty of a clerk is, but it was said that they would not do the research, the council people, by the clerk and Mr. Lightner.
Right.
That's the clarification that I wanted in the comment I brought up. So a clerk assisting counsel, we understand that.
Yes.
And that would explain what I'm basically kind of trying to, you know, to say, is that they would have assistance by the clerk to do the things that they as council. It sounded like they were not going to have an input or do the research that goes to Lightner and the council.
Yeah, no, council will have an input. We'll, we'll, we'll give the city clerk the information, and then she'll do the research. Then we'll work together to create, you know, whether that's an ordinance resolution or, you know, need be. Councilman Davis, you want to just respond?
Yes, I was just going to touch on what Ms. Littleton, uh, mentioned about how with council, our role would be in assisting our city clerk and anybody else. Um, one thing that I've, I try to do since I've been here is go to each department and try to familiarize myself with what, one, with what they do, and just, two, introduce myself. The HR department is one of my favorite departments in the whole building. They are awesome. They have a great personality. They just love to help, and they're willing to do the work. As Chief Lightner mentioned, they're a little understaffed right now, so you know what I mean? They, they need help. I went down there yesterday and said, "Listen, as a city council member who's not a head of the department, who can be in the community, you know, send me a text, send me a call. How can I help you?" And it could be a simple fact of, "Hey, we need help sending these faxes or making copies." I'm not above helping anybody do any type of job throughout City Hall, because, one, we're a community, and as a community, we have to help one another wherever it could be. I'm a certified project manager, same way Ty is. I'm not going to get in Ty's way because that's his job, but I'm more than happy to help and assist him in any facet that I can to help him improve what he needs help on. So I understand what you're saying on how can city council, as a council, assist our city clerk in the research and, um, the policymaking? So I understand that part. And we, and we, as council and mayor, are agreeing to do that. But we also have to allow people to do the jobs that they're put in place to do, because they do have the skill sets, the talent, and the knowledge to do those jobs. But at the same time, you know, we, we are here to help each other. So I understand where you're coming from, Ms. Littleton.
Yes, we understood because I applauded the progress of the change. So I think you got it, too, because you understood me, but thank you very much for reiterating those things. I applauded the progress of the change.
No, definitely. Got you. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, and also, I wanted to, uh, hit on that we'll, oftentimes, people say, uh, you know, "We have to hire more Chester residents," or "You want to see more Chester residents." Well, there are so many positions open, uh, within City Hall. And if you want a Chester resident, please encourage your family and friends to apply. Oftentimes, people say, "There ain't enough of us on the police force." Well, they can apply right now. We're looking for police officers. And so encourage your family and friends to apply, uh, for those different positions. And I was on the website yesterday, uh, and there are so many positions that are currently available within city government, uh, that you guys can apply for. Also, we talked about a, uh, the Hispanic community, and I agree, I think the Hispanic community is underrepresented. And so, uh, and I think all of council, we all recognize that. Uh, after, one of the first meetings I had with the mayor after we won the election, one of the first things he said to me is that we don't have enough Hispanic representation. And he wanted to bring on some people of Hispanic to represent us. And so as we're building our community liaison department backup, I know we're going to bring on a community liaison, but as more funds become available, it's my hope that we can also bring on a Hispanic community liaison that would be able to work with the Hispanic community and help us, uh, here in City Hall. And also, we talked about going out to the seniors. And so in our plan, as we do our community listening sessions and our community talent halls, the plan is to go to the community centers, uh, you know, down there on Wilson Street, and also the community, uh, developments and, uh, the towers and different places like that. So that way, if they can't come to us, we can go to, uh, to them. And so it is planned. It's in the works. Uh, like I said, we're going through a lot of reorganization, and all of this takes time, but I do believe we will get there. So thank you all, and have an amazing day.
Don't answer. Don't, don't answer. Any comment?
No, sir. Councilman West, do you have any, uh, further comment before we end council meeting?
Councilwoman? I'm, I'm here. I'm here. Um, I've been listening to all of the engagement with the, um, uh, council, mayor and council and the, um, uh, residents, and I'm encouraged by it. I do want to say that, um, we don't give enough credit to the Public Works Department in terms of, we do. We know what they do. But a lot of people on the street, um, they don't know the magnitude of the work that they have to accomplish during an eight-hour or a seven-and-a-half-hour workday. So to say that they're not cleaning, they're not doing this and that, um, that's not true, you know? Um, they're doing a fantastic job. All of us, members of council, know what they do, as well as the parks personnel. They all have a, a large responsibility, a lot of grounds to cover, and they're doing that. You may not see them every day, but they're somewhere, working every day, okay? And I just want, again, to, um, Councilman, um, uh, Davis and I will be working on some initiatives also regarding, um, recycling. And so we're putting our heads together to brainstorm so that we can encourage people to recycle. It's, it's mandatory. You have to recycle, you know? And, uh, it, it helps the environment and what have you. And so that's something that we're, we need to be paying attention to. So, um, I look forward to working with the mayor on the intergovernmental affairs piece, which is very important, and also on the Public Works Committee. That's all I have to say. Have a good day, everybody.
All right, we're going to close on that. Meeting adjourned. Whoa, there's more? What? No, I asked him already.
Yeah, I asked him.
Yeah.
Thank you, though. Thank you. I appreciate that, chief.
Oh, yeah, that was our first time, so it was. Yeah, I see, I remember it from the previous council meetings when they would say, "I make a motion that we approve ordinance on its first and final reading or its first and last reading." So I, yeah, yeah. You sure did.
I know plenty of parents. You know, when I was over there, a half of the people came over to me, "Miss Brown, Miss Brown." I didn't have them in school. I know the parents. I'm soft-spoken. And you know I could communicate. I always tell a parent when they came in there, "Hold it. You come in here, I'm going to be with a teacher." But listen to her first. You already listened to your child. Keep your child with you. Go into the classroom. Have that conference. Listen to the teacher's side and the child's side. But don't ever say your child is wrong, because in one person's life, okay? I never fully take a teacher's side. You know that. You know that. But, um, I will volunteer, because that, that was my thing. I'm not just a activist for circle. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm heartwarming over that, because it's about our environment. But also, I'm one of those people saying, "What can I do to help?" I only be paid for it. This is me. I just volunteer, answering phones. I got heart problems and everything. I can't do no good often. I can't do, yeah, I can't, yeah. And I try not to get excited, because when I get excited, I get panicked inside. So, but I put myself out here that, you know, every time you go to say, "Well, we need somebody to manage this," or whatever, I'm in there, you know, calling. I want to see, I want to list them and just say what I want. I want to volunteer myself, because I speak for myself. I don't need nobody else to, oh. I speak for myself, and I know y'all did a good job, but.